... can focus on this. An ordinance to the City of Vero Beach, Florida amending the code to the City of Vero Beach Chapter 60, Appendix. Definitions by revising the definitions for boarding house, community residential home, dwelling unit, family, and multifamily residential structure, creating a definition and serviceability providing for an effective date requested by the planning director.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening.
Tim, good evening to you and your patience is...
It's a long evening. The draft ordinance before you, we revised it from the last, the first reading of the boarding house definition. We did some tweaking, Wayne and I, on that just to make it read better. But other than that, it's the same ordinance that we discussed at the last, at the first reading.
This is a public hearing. If anybody in the public would like to speak, please step forward.
Is this a final hearing or is there another?
This is the final.
This is the final.
Thank you for clarification. I'm sorry, sir.
And thank you for your patience.
For your record, my name's Michael O'Hare. I'm a lawyer with a business address on Cardinal Drive in Vero Beach, 3111 Cardinal Drive. And I'm here to speak on this subject. And I'm glad to catch you while you're fresh. I'll be as brief as I possibly can. As Tim told you, he and Wayne have been working on tweaking the ordinance that you've got. Boarding houses have been prohibited in single-family residential areas for a long, long time. However, the definition of boarding house, to make your ordinance enforceable, has required some tweaking because it was too comprehensive. Wayne and Tim have been working on that with me looking over their shoulder and volunteering another opinion from time to time. And you have something that works at this point in time. I know I'm going to hear that private property rights should permit somebody in a neighborhood or a single-family residential neighborhood to take in rumors. And I guess I could tell my clients will just thank God she doesn't want to run a metal scrapyard from her house or a recycling center. But that's what zoning's all about, you know? If that's what she wants to do, she ought to go somewhere where it's permitted. It's a blight on a residential neighborhood. In fact, it is a blight. It damages the neighbors, it damages their way of life, and it damages their property values to have rooms rented for short periods of time. And I'm not even going to get near the transient rental issues that you've already heard so much about. But they are not dissimilar, except that the boarding house in a residential neighborhood has a lot more turnover than a single-family rental store. And to that extent, is certainly, has more impact on the neighborhood itself. And the property owner who is running the boarding house on Banyan Lane in the Central Beach area doesn't even live there. I mean, the purpose she owns the house for is to rent rooms. It's a commercial enterprise. She has no investment in the neighborhood, and neither do her tenants have any investment in the neighborhood. Just as importantly, the people who are running a rooming house, and it's not a, it's not a widespread problem as far as I know, but they're doing it by providing rooms on the cheap. They are taking shortcuts that a motel or a hotel would not take. They're not supervised by the board of health, they're not looked after by the fire marshal, and, you know, the occupants of these homes are put at risk because the owners of the buildings are taking the short, cheap way to get things done. It's just a problem all the way around. And I think I've spoken at some length about the damage it causes the neighbors. The neighbors have banded together to hire me for another opinion at great expense. And I'm happy to be here, but I want to see this ordinance passed, and I'd like to see it passed tonight. It was unanimously approved by the P&amp;Z, and it really will give Tim the tools he needs to enforce the code and shut them down.
I don't have anything further. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Good to see you always. Anyone else within the audience who'd like to speak? Hello again.
Hello again. Thank you for having me. Ken Daig, 1846 21st Avenue. I am in agreement with the previous speaker, happens to be an attorney. I would ask you consideration in passing this ordinance tonight, and I would hope that you would all be in favor of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. Anyone else?
We got everybody at the airport.
Yeah, we'll get two more opinions.
They're going around. Barry Siegel, my office address, 621 17th Street, Vero Beach, Florida. I'm actually here on behalf of Irene Snyder. Something very interesting that never actually came up specifically in the code, in the P&amp;Z hearing, but that Mr. O'Hare raises and that kind of buttresses my point, this is a little bit of a witch hunt, is the first time that I've heard it referred to as a "she" in this situation, referring to my client. This is a targeted event at one neighbor against another neighbor, and I think it's something that needs to be taken into consideration when evaluating what is going on here. And then something else that struck me that I heard tonight was you, Mr. Mayor, when you said, when you presented the Constitution Day sponsor, "Rights that are taken away cannot be given back." And that's not something that I hope that we gloss over and that we just think of quickly when we talk about a person's property rights, when they buy a property knowing of certain rights and certain abilities and using them. And then we are put on a witch hunt where in a situation like this, there's no evidence to this board or to P&amp;Z that there's any changes in property values, there's no, there's no evidence of any kind of destruction to the integrity of a neighborhood. My client, the "she" in this situation, has never rented short term. She has never exceeded densities for her properties. She does have two houses that she rents out rooms to them. One house has a mother and a daughter in one of the rooms. She's rented to pilots. I think she may have rented to a baseball player in the past, but different people that work in the community, nurses, was how it started, that when she moved down here, she had nurse friends that needed somewhere to live. And so, we're not talking about a short-term issue, which is another issue for the board to take. We're not talking about parking. That's, that's the issue you're going to take up once the rest of us go home to go to sleep. The issues that are, the issues that the parties keep raising with any type of evidence of any kind of detrimental effect on the neighborhood are not something that are linked to a boarding house. I have a real estate law practice. I see problems all the time with rentals. The most egregious was a client that rented out a house to one person, and that person turned it into a drug house, literally disconnected the electric meter, pulled out all of the air conditioning, installed lighting, then grew marijuana, and did that in the middle of the neighborhood for a large period of time until the police finally figured out that it was, that was off the grid. That doesn't happen because it's a boarding house or because it's a single-family residence. The issues that are presented to you as a board can be addressed by existing code provisions. There are no provisions, there's no, there's nothing taking place in my client's homes that is not governed by the code, and more importantly, that are not as equally likely to happen in a, in another home, whether it's occupied by its owner residence or occupied by one family. This dragnet that's coming in is going to disrupt the people's peaceful use of their properties. This is going to affect a roommate situation. If you have a flight safety student that wants, that has a house for rent and wants to sublet that house also to one of his friends, can't do it under this. If you're going to have a number of different students' example for flight safety, which I have to think would be a large bulk of this type of market, they're not going to be able to do it. They're going to be restricted to one lease per house. And so, you're dragging up a lot of people for a neighborhood dispute. This is because what "she" is doing, and I think that speaks volumes. This wrong can be, can be addressed with your existing code provisions. You're giving code enforcement a nearly impossible task to enforce. My client would be willing to say, "This provision could work better if you wanted to add in a restriction that we would allow these rental situations," but my client's willing to say, "You can make these six-month minimums." She's never rented short-term to anyone. She's always had anywhere from six months to a year for her tenants. She has never rented a room to more than one person. So, for example, one of her houses is a four-bedroom house, and eight people can live in that under the existing provisions of the code. She's not doing that. She'd be, and so, I think that one of the things that P&amp;Z, P&amp;Z said two things I remember very well. One was, "Mr. Siegel, I don't believe a word you've said." That was, that was an entertaining way to end my evening. But one of the, but one of the other things they said is, "Well, why don't we start slowly with this and we can adjust it over time?" And so, instead of having this large dragnet of all boarding houses, why don't we start slowly? Why don't we say, "You can't do this without leases for less than six months," or "You can't do this unless you're renting for no more than one per suite or one per room." We don't have to just go from zero to sixty to address one person's concerns with his neighbor, something he doesn't like. And so, with that, I think that the, the board could very easily address staff and say, "Maybe we don't need to go zero to sixty on this immediately. Maybe this is something that we can do slowly. And maybe we do rewrite the provision to say six-month minimum. Maybe we rewrite the provision that says one person per room instead of just taking this whole thing out in bank like this." And so, those would be my comments, and certainly if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. Any questions of Mr. Siegel?
I have one question. We are putting a definition of family in this, and is that not a legal concern with all of the things going on around the country with the definition of what a family is? Is that legal for us to make a definition of a family?
Well, I think that's what we had decided, what we had was more likely to...
I just don't want to leave us open to some type of lawsuit.
Yeah.
Because we're saying, "This is what a family is."
Yeah, the, well, almost every code, zoning code describes what a family is. But the problem with ours is, is it is dated, and it doesn't take...
And that, I thought so.
Yeah, and it doesn't take into consideration today's family, the, what we always called the nuclear family. And actually, I perked up my ears when Mr. Siegel mentioned one situation where you've got somebody that rents the house and he has roommates. And Tim can disagree, but if there's one lease and they're living there as a family, I don't...
That's correct.
Imagine they'll, they'll meet the code.
Yeah, they'll meet the code.
So, three roommates together could lease a house, as long as all their names were on the lease?
That, that's how we have this, the way we did it.
And if one moved out and somebody else wanted in, they'd have to rewrite a whole new lease?
No. I don't know that they would necessarily have to all have their names on one lease. I mean, if they're just...
Well, they have to own one lease. It really depends.
One person could have, you know...
That was my question. Could one person have a lease and then rent a couple more rooms out to his other roommates?
That would be multiple leases.
Well, if it's, if it's the owner. No, follow me on this. If...
I want to.
We did tweak this. You know that.
Okay, so, forget that they're, forget that they're unrelated. That was the problem with our definition of boarding house. We were singling out people that weren't related by blood or marriage. That was a problem. If you use that as the classification.
Okay.
Okay? So, say you have a family that's related by blood and marriage. You have, say it's a single parent. The single parent leases property. Well, they don't have to put every other family member's name on the lease. So, if this group, this unrelated group qualifies as a family because they're living together under common, the common areas are all using the kitchen, they share meals together and so on and so forth, living as a family, just because one of them has their name on the lease doesn't mean the other ones can't live there.
Okay.
Whether they're exchanging money or not, Tim's not going to go check their wallets to see if they're...
All right. That's what I just wanted to make sure of. And they're not breaking any type of rule if one person has the lease and rents a couple of rooms to friends?
And they're not, if they're, if, yes, and if they're not setting up, you know, separate with no access, where they have, you know, facilities for independent...
If they're not turning into multifamily, which is a separate violation.
And that's a code violation, would it not be?
That's a code. That would be multifamily and a single family.
If somebody is putting a little kitchenette in their bedroom, that's a problem.
Right.
Okay.
Questions to Mr. Siegel? Any closing comments?
If I could just address what they, I don't necessarily agree with the way this is written, that if I, if I rent a house from you, Mr. Mayor, and then a couple of my friends want to come over and pay me rent to live in some of the rooms, that's going to violate this. That is prohibited under this because even though there's only one written lease agreement, this provides for written or oral lease agreements. And so, the days of roommates like that are gone.
But I thought we just determined that. Mr. McGary, did you not say that that's perfectly fine?
Under one written or oral rental agreement, the way it's written now, I think he's correct on that.
Well, I think your premise there was, and remember, you're the one that wanted that, for help and enforcement. But if, see, I think you have to come from the, I think your premise was that it's coming from the owner. There's only one lease from the owner.
If the owner is there, and that's what we talked about, there was a big debate about that.
Right.
So, if the owner's there, the owner could have multiple people living at the place. If the owner lives at the place...
The big determining factor, and again, it's an enforcement issue that's next to impossible.
Yeah.
Are they living as a family?
Well, when, when we brought this up last time, I asked the question about, "Well, why are we calling a dwelling unit a unit that has kitchen capabilities?" Because I wrote that in big red letters right here, "Kitchen."
That's usually...
That was the demarcation of whether you had, you were renting a unit or you were just renting a, a room and sharing the kitchen and all the other amenities.
And that's the case in his client's case. That's exactly what they were doing.
They're...
They had individual leases, but they had one kitchen, okay, in that.
Okay. If this, in truth, is saying what you said the second time as opposed to what the first time, if this is making it illegal for one guy to rent a house and his roommate moves out and he's still on the same lease and he gets somebody else in as his roommate and he wants to rent the room to him rather than the first guy that was there, then that's wrong. I mean, we, there's a lot of people in this community that cannot afford, they're all the rent and they have roommates.
Well, you normally have a roommate that they would be under the same lease. If you write a lease, I would say, "Dare." I mean, I just had a tenant with my place.
I think what Tim was trying to get at with the, say someone owns the house or the owner's living there, whether they're living there or not, if they're starting to rent out individual rooms that are basically off-limits to everyone else, they have maybe their own bathroom, you know, you can't go in there, that's where you're separating it out and turning it into the boarding house. That's the intent of this.
I mean...
It's not for roommates to live together.
But if he's saying it's, it's now going to affect them, I mean, there's...
Well, I'm reading this thing, when he brought up the thing written in oral, that's, if we, it could be, we just eliminate that sentence if you want to do that, because we get back to the same issue on enforcement of this. Nobody's trying to stop roommates together putting together to do that. That was not the intent.
In other words, they're sharing a house, they're not trying to get into multifamily.
Yes. And the whole idea was to help in enforcement when we get into a situation where we see these individual rooms being set up, they have multiple leases, but we were not really trying to go after the, so, I mean, getting back, we could leave out that whole thing on multiple leases. Because we do have language in...
Wayne, is this a deadly flaw? We need to table this and bring it back later?
Do you think the last part...
Which sentence are you striking?
Well, it would read, "A dwelling unit within, boarding house, a dwelling unit within which more than one individual room or one suite, but less than the entire dwelling unit is used, maintained, or offered for rental, period. And the, or where such rental is offered or provided to multiple tenants under more than one written or oral lease." You just strike all that.
Okay, let's strike that.
Really, and I've argued with Tim about this, the lease part is kind of an evidentiary thing.
Right.
Let's do that. Let's do that and move on.
Let's strike that.
But you understand, you still may be unhappy, may get, people complain that you still have a boarding house.
Yes, I understand.
But this, this is a hard thing to enforce this, is Wayne, we, so, I don't have a problem to do that.
If you're okay with it, and Wayne's okay with it, and the mayor's okay with it, let's move on.
I'm okay. I don't see anybody else in the audience for public hearing portion. We'll close the public hearing.
Just before you do that, I, can you just cross, I mean, I just want to make sure I understand what it is that, make sure I have another comment.
Where are we amending it, putting the period at the...
Period, go after, or offered for renter, rental, period. And then you're striking, "Or where such rental is offered or provided to multiple tenants under more than one written or oral rental agreement lease."
Okay, so, we're striking everything at the end here, or where rental is provided, or offered for rental, period.
Okay, does everybody feel comfortable with that?
I'll make a motion to pass it.
I think Mr. O'Hare has a comment.
Mr. O'Hare has a comment, okay.
I can be comfortable with it if Tim assures me that it's going to work and that he can enforce it. That's all I care about.
Okay. You feel comfortable now, Tim?
Yeah, I think we can do it because we have other provisions under the dwelling unit, which talks about, if we look at them setting up a separate locked door...
Can you live with it, yes or no?
Even when they have a micro, yeah, the best I can. This is going to be hard to enforce anyway.
Yes or no? I'm making a motion. That is amended.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Fletcher?
He's for it. Thank you, Michael. Good night.
Thank you both, really.
Item 3B, an ordinance to the City of Vero Beach, Florida amending the code to the City of Vero Beach, Chapter 72, Traffic and Vehicle, Article 2, Division 3, Residential Restrictions in Chapter 63, Off-Street Parking and Loading Requirements by Creating Section 74-82D and Amending Section 63.O2K Relating to Restrictions in the Parking of Motor Vehicles in Front of Yard Setbacks in Residential Zoning Districts Providing for Conflict and Serviceability Providing for an Effective Date, Planning Department.
Based, yeah, let's hope we get through this one. Based on the concerns you all raised at the last meeting, we came up with a series of options to add to this, to allow exemptions, going from a, from a, just a single visitor coming there and parking on the lawn to where you have occasional social gatherings once a month for more than 72 hours, to a menu of four things you could add to it or mix and match. Whatever we did, which you feel is reasonable for this to do that.
Mr. McGary, when this was reviewed by P&amp;Z, what were the options that they approved?
Well, no, when, when they looked at it, the only option we had, we, remember, we talked about the last meeting?
Yeah.
They first had something on special occasions, and then Wayne and I discussed it and we said, "No, that creates..." So, we got, we told them we got rid of that. So, their last meeting, they did not have that. They were told we had removed that. So, they had the very, without exemptions on there, basically. And we didn't have a live discussion of wanting these kind of exemptions because I think they were looking at the practicality of it. Somebody washed their car, we're not going to send, what are we going to do, send code enforcement out to, you know?
No, but you never know, when some neighbor, there's nothing better to do or grudge to, you know, to pull that they're going to call code enforcement and say, "Hey, this is going on." We've seen it happen.
We added all these other options for you to add on. I mean, I don't have a problem, as I said, whether you pass this ordinance or not.
Mr. McGary, based on the one we just passed...
Yes, ma'am.
For boarding houses, do you feel it absolutely necessary that we also have this one, taking away the property rights of every single home in the entire city of Vero Beach to park a grass on the car when the kids come home for college, just because of boarding houses and we've already passed an ordinance just now?
Well, I mean, this, it isn't just boarding houses. We do get complaints about people that say, "Gee, I lived at so-and-so, I didn't know you could park cars on it." But it will affect everybody. You have, but this is like any kind of zoning thing. Zoning's there to protect your property values and that, and you give up some of your rights if you live in a single-family neighborhood. The question is, you know, that's what you all make a decision on. I, yeah, I, we gave you some options here. I think they're, I think this opens it up more if you do that. It certainly takes care of some of those, but, you know, a person's got a right to park on the front lawn, I guess if you feel that's the right, then you don't want this ordinance at all.
Can a car park in the swale off the road? Is that considered the front yard?
It's in the public right of way.
It's a right-of-way.
They can park on the right-of-way.
If you go in the Central Beach, you see where the cars are parked, that's right-of-way. They're allowed to park in that, in that grass areas.
There is a house on Bougainvillea Lane that the driveway does not go all the way to the road. It stops at the sidewalk, and then it's grass between the driveway and the road. Is that considered their grass, or is that considered the swale, or is that considered a unpaved driveway?
Well, the driveway, if it's been approved, they have a driveway under this ordinance, they're approved, they can park there, whether, however...
But their driveway only goes from the sidewalk to their garage.
Okay.
Beyond the sidewalk would be street right-of-way. That's street right-of-way. So, they'd have the right, unless there's a no-parking sign.
They usually have a curb cut.
No, this one doesn't.
I think the key to this whole thing is, do we believe that we have a problem with people parking cars and vehicles and boats in their yards?
I just believe that...
No, no, not boats. We have ordinances in the code book on boats. Let's not go there.
Let me just chime in. It's too bad Mr. O'Hare left, because when he originally called me about boarding houses, I asked him, "What is the problem? What are your clients seeing that they're complaining about parking on the front lawn?"
But that's one and maybe two houses in the entire city that, that brought this problem, and we have addressed it with the boarding house issue we just passed. Have you ever had complaints, Mr. McGary, of anyone else having a problem with someone parking on the grass?
We get complaints about it, but we tell them it's not, it's legal. I mean, there's nothing...
We do get, we do get calls on people parking vehicles in front yards and...
But vehicles like boats and trailers and...
No, I'm not about cars. People just pulling their cars, they'll park their car in their front yard all the time.
Yeah.
This is just a tool. If there's a blatant infraction, this is a tool to stop it.
Correct.
I truly feel this is a bad ordinance. I really do.
My grandson comes home, see me, and parks on my lawn, I don't see that being a problem. This is just for blatant offenders.
No, because we don't have a code enforcement staff that goes out and drives around and tries to find the blatant enforcers. We have code enforcement by neighbors who call into the city departments and tell them that there's a violation.
That's true. Most of the call-ins are from residents.
So, you're not going to have somebody driving around and seeing these things and enforcing it. You're going to have enforcement by your neighbors.
Well, we depend on neighbors, yeah. You're right.
You know, we do have options here. I mean, I don't have a problem with the option of 72 hours. I mean, that's what, four days? Three days?
Three days.
It's after nine.
Yeah, four and a half hours of waiting.
If somebody's going to park their car in the grass for three days, I mean, I'll...
And we do have many homes within our city that do not have the opportunities that all of us do with large driveways. There's a house right on Conway that only has two spaces in front. That's all they have.
I currently own a house without a large driveway, as a matter of fact.
I'm sorry?
I currently own a house in Castaway Cove without a large driveway.
Oh.
And my children do sometimes, although, although the, the Neighborhood Association has a rule against it, but they've been known to park there overnight. I think the 72 hours, the option two, is reasonable. Let's go on with the...
Okay, this is a public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak to this issue, please come down. Seeing no one in the audience that wants to speak, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion with a, an option?
Which option or combination?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we pass this with option two, 72 hours, because it's less restrictive, reflecting Mr. Kramer's view, I think.
And do I have a second?
Beat me to it, okay.
Are there any more discussions? Hearing none, Ms. Vock?
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Carroll?
No.
Mayor Fletcher?
Yes. Passes forward to one. Item 4A, a resolution of the City of-- City Council of the City of Vero Beach, authorizing the City of Vero Beach, Florida to enter into a locally funded agreement, amendment number one with the Florida Department of Transportation relating to color coding of replacement traffic signal mask alarm assemblies to be installed at State Road A1A and 17th Street, providing for an effective date requested by Public Works.
The City Council's already passed this. This is an amendment which allows us to recover our money. It was like $37,000. Under the previous resolution, if it only cost $35,000, they would take our $2,000, put it back into the project. This allows us to recover our costs, and we only pay for just that--
Good answer.
All right. What's the-- we gotta make a motion for the next date?
No, this is-- this is-- this is closeout tonight.
This is without public hearing.
Then motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Vock?
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Fletcher?
Yes. Item 5A, a resolution of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, establishing rates and fees for the collection disposal of solid waste and recyclable materials and sale of items used for collecting-- collection purposes, repealing Resolution 2014-24, providing for conflict and serviceability, providing for effective date, Public Works.
Part of the budget process in the solid waste department, it goes up on a per-residential unit of about 30 cents. It also goes up 20 cents or something on the commercial, but it's in conformance with the discussions.
Mr. Cuddy, we did adjust these rates in September of 2012.
Correct. And we are adjusting them again, and this is in order to build up a capital reserve. We're still below the contracted rate that the county has under the state-- under their contracts throughout the county.
I guess I'm still looking for what the-- yeah, what the basis of the rate adjustment was. What are you trying to get as far as a certain reserve fund, or, you know, what was the goal of this adjustment?
To purchase a new truck, is the primary thing. Get a reserve-- capital reserve in order to be able to purchase a capital--
Will this rate increase of 2013? Because I thought that was the thinking when we did the rate adjustment for 2012.
And the answer is--
That was the theory I got then, so I'm just wondering if I'm getting the same theory of another rate increase.
And it is, and the fact that some of the capital money went, and when we purchased the truck, and if we needed additional costs, and that's what we do, is build it in for that capital reserve. But yes, it is projected to pay for that equipment.
And I'm in agreement with the philosophy of building up that reserve for the expenses that we hadn't been doing in the past, but once again, just trying to get the rationale for the rate increase. There was also an adjustment of the rollout rate from $10, from $2 up to 10. I mean, that seemed like a significant increase, and wondered why.
$2 per lift and--
It's 10 to 2.
$2 per lift versus $10 per lift each week. If you look on the page--
Okay, maybe I missed it.
This would be on the appendix of the resolution on the first page. And it says, "Rollout by city crew."
Yeah, that we went, yeah, from $10 to 2. It just seemed like--
The 10 has the mark-through. The 2 is underlined, so it's $2 per lift as opposed to $10.
So why are we making a reduction there? It just doesn't-- a significant one just didn't seem right.
Monte Falls Director of Public Works, it was a little ambiguous the way it read. It was a weekly charge. The way it was-- the $10 was supposed to be applied weekly. It read ambiguously, so we changed it to $2 per service.
Per lift, I see. And before you had it--
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, it's wordsmithing, okay.
Makes sense.
This needs to be set for a public hearing for the 17th, is that right, Ms. Vock?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve for the 17th?
Second.
Second.
Ms. Vock?
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Fletcher?
Yes. Item 5B, an ordinance of the City of Vero Beach requesting-- requested by 703-725-17th Street LLC to annex 2.50 acres more or less into the city, which property lies south of city limits along the south side of 17th Street, east of Highway US-1, pursuant to the voluntary annexation provision of Sections 171.044 Florida statutes, providing for conflict and serviceability, providing for an effective date requested by Planning, Tim.
Oh, thank you. I'll be very quick here. This is a petition, it's a voluntary annexation request of a 2.5 acre property located, show it on the map up there, the location map on 17th Street. It's the location of the shops of 17th Street Shopping Center, 22,500 square feet shopping center. We've done a staff report for you to-- that has been reviewed by the Planning and Zoting Board. We don't see any problems with this. We request that you move forward with the advertising, the ordinance pursuant to the Florida statutes, and notification to the County Commission.
Tammy, this needs to go for a public hearing also. The 15th, do you have here the 10-15?
Well, it's-- it's-- yes, there's a certain--
Some notices that have to be sent out.
--advertisements we have to run. It's a lot more complicated.
It'd go up for 10-15 this year. Any emotion?
Motion to move to the second hearing in 17?
10-15.
10-15.
10-15, that too?
Yeah.
Second motion.
Ms. Vock?
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Fletcher?
Yes. Item C, an ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida, requested by the city manager to amend the comprehensive plan, future land use map by changing the land use designation from RM, residential medium, up to 10 units per acre, to GU, government institutional public use for zero units per acre, for properties located between 17th Street and 18th Street, including a portion of Lot 1, Block 2, of the plot of the Dr. Richard B. Bullington subdivision containing 6.53 acres more or less, providing for an effective date, Planning Department. You just got covered up this meeting, didn't you, Tim?
Did we read both?
We can read the other one together, Mayor.
Want to read both of them? An ordinance of Vero Beach requested by the city manager to amend the official zoning map by changing the zoning designation from RM10 medium and high-density multifamily residential up to 10 units per acre, containing 3.65 acres more or less, and the planning designation from POI, professional office institutional, zero units per acre, containing 2.88 acres more or less to GU, government use, zero units per acre, for properties located between 17th and 18th Street, including a portion of Lot 1, Block 2 of the plot of Dr. Richard Bullington subdivision, totaling 6.53 acres more or less.
Oh, thank you. I know it is. I'm gonna briefly just go through this land swap. It's gonna be a quasi-additional hearing, so we don't want to get too much of the tickers, but obviously, the land swap, which is triggering all this, is a decision you'll all have to make at some point in time. So I just want to give the background on it. Showing up on the map, the location of the future land use map change for the three parcels. The redesignations requested by the city manager allow the city and the owners of these properties to enter into a land swap. The property owners, Shivvah 17th Street and LLC and Wave Victoria Village LLC, have authorized the city to move forward with these redesignations. The property owners would like to swap these properties with the city's 4.4 acre postal annex, which is located on Indian River Drive and 17th. This property was to be designated for the FPL electric substation under our contract. We need to provide them a site. The property owners would like to commercially develop this property, which would be more preferable use than locating the substation at this commercially very desirable and highly visible location. The city would transfer ownership of the subject property's FPL upon closing of the sale of the city electric utility. However, accomplishes the subject properties must be re-designated from their future land use designation of residential medium to the government institutional public use, and the zoning, the RM10 and POI, to government use zoning. FPL is still negotiating with the owners, the last I heard, of the subject property, and the city still has to negotiate the swap with the property owners. The adoption hearing is scheduled for November 19th, and we put this off because we've got several steps that have to go. The owners of the property may not reach agreement with FPL or get cold feet. You may get cold feet doing a land swap after we figure out what all the things are. So there's plenty of opportunity here, so we did the 19th. It's far enough off in the future to handle this.
19th of what?
November.
November 19th.
Yes.
November 19?
November 19.
That acceptable with--
Yeah, we talked to them. They would like that. They need some room. It's not a problem legally.
That is correct. They still gotta negotiate the price, the differential, and the relocation of the substation itself, and that is being done as we speak. And part of this process is really to make sure that they understand if the city council's on board, if the closing takes place, when the closing takes place, that we would be in agreement with this transfer.
Jim, you and I talked about this, so I think I know the answer, but I'm gonna answer, and Tim said it. But in effect, the actual swap of the property would not occur until such time as there was a closing of the sale of electric. Is that not correct?
That is correct. That is the intent. Now, that would not preclude the city council if you wanted--
Still make the swap.
--to make the swap, but the intent of this is closing of the electric.
Yeah, I would not want to, because the postal annex property has more commercial value than the property on 17th. The property on 17th right now is a white elephant. I mean, it's got three buildings that were built and that are empty. So I would-- I would-- I would personally, speaking for myself, I would not want to close this until the electric closes, because I wouldn't want to give up the corner.
And, Mr. Winger, I agree with that. If, in fact, the closing wasn't a part of this process, I would not be recommending that we take over that other partial of ground.
I understand that.
But I would recommend that we find the value of the postal annex and maybe put an RFP or some other way of disposing that site.
Okay, well, that's a little different than what I explained to planning zone, but that's all right. I mean, I can understand those concerns, and--
What's the problem with just-- with just putting it out to RFP and then getting it sold?
Because in the contract, we have to provide a space for the substation. The only partial of land we own right now that we could put a substation on and transferred a fee simple to Florida Power and Light is that corner.
Well, we can do the swap ahead of time.
Do what now?
Could we not do the swap ahead of time, which--
Yes, so you could.
You could do that ahead of time, and--
But the problem with doing the swap ahead of time is we're gonna be stuck with this piece of property that we would have no use for.
Yeah, I don't want to do this one.
My understanding is, though, if we get market price, that it would be-- it would compensate us.
But the market price of that property may be less than the corner property, especially when the builder--
Well, that was the idea. If you swapped it, you would get a higher for the corner property, and you would have proceeds out of that.
Yes, sir, and all of our discussions to this point have been that we would get appraisals for both partials, and the differential would be paid to--
Right.
--paid to the city, because it is a higher value. But yes, the answer is--
Well, in any case, we don't have to decide that tonight, although I'm not sure, like, the November 17th is okay, as long as you stay with-- the city council would have to act to transfer the property, other than a closing electric. As long as you say that, I think we should move forward with this.
The city manager cannot purchase the land without the city council, so--
Yeah, we got some wiggle time.
And that-- and that date can be moved again.
Yeah, that date--
You understand, we just picked a date out there. If you still have, you know, we can move this still out.
I'll motion to approve.
Yeah, I'll make a second.
Make a motion for a hearing for November 19.
We need a motion to approve for a hearing on 11-19, 2013. We need to do these in separate resolutions. Item C, do I hear a motion for item C?
Salute.
Okay, a second.
Ms. Vock?
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Fletcher?
Yes.
I'll make a motion for item D.
November 19.
For the November meeting for hearing.
11-19, that's right. Ms. Vock?
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor Fletcher?
Yes.
Did we get a second on that, by the way?
Yes, I did.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Tim. Sorry we kept you up so late.
It was thrilling, thank you.
For us, too.
Ms. Vock, appointment to Recreation Commission?
Yes, there's an alternate number two position open on the Recreation Commission, and we have received one application from Ms. Angie Sheppers, who is interested in serving on that commission, and I have attached a copy of her application.
And I did have a discussion today with your assistant, city clerk, about the fact that she serves on one of our committees for the Recreation Commission, along with another member, and I was told that that was not a concern. She could still continue to serve on that committee since that is a-- not necessarily considered a sunshine violation.
We actually have a subcommittee where there are two Recreation Commission members serving on it right now, and there hasn't been a problem. They understand the sunshine law.
I have certainly no problem with this application, however, my question is, how long this vacancy has existed, and--
Well, actually, this one hasn't been open that long.
That's what I'm wondering, about setting precedence and appointing people with, you know, giving a reasonable time for applications to come in.
And interviews. We did not--
And that's fine. We can hold it off and do some interviews. I've just-- I'm not getting any applications for any of the other boards and commissions that were the openings that we have. You know, if we want to hold this off to see if we can--
I said, how long has it been open? I just want to be consistent. I mean, that we leave--
It's been since July.
Since July? Okay.
Nobody's come in. I'd make a motion to appoint her to this position.
A second.
Yeah, me too.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passing unanimously. City manager?
Just a couple items. One is the work order for the agreement between City of Vero Beach and Kimberly Horn and Associates. This is where we're really working, the airport and the Public Works Department working together to try to address issues on Airport Drive, the entry, the main entryway into the airport. And by passing this, it will be subject to our grants coming through. Our airport director feels 99.9% sure that we're gonna get the grant. They've been verbally approved, and by doing this work order just progresses the process much faster.
Do you need any action?
You see consensus?
Play on world--
You just need consensus, or you want a motion?
If you need consensus, good job.
I'd take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
And the second one is a work order in agreement between City of Vero Beach and CDM.
We're going for it.
And this is one on the airport, actually on the runways, and we would like to have a motion as well. And it's subject to federal grants coming in. Again, he's 90-- well, he's probably 95% sure on this one.
I should move--
All in favor?
Now, isn't this--
Aye.
We're tired.
This late at night, you have to be really clear.
If there's any further questions from the mayor or council, I'll be very happy to try to--